Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Volusia County School Board Workshop for Tuesday, November 18th. We will call this meeting to order. We're going to ask you to please stand for a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence soon thereafter.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. So our first item on the agenda, totally fitting for today, is Wings for Success, Dr. Balgobin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Colong. I would like to invite at this point Ms. Colleen Carvin. Colleen Carvin is our coordinator for Educational Enhancements. She will come forward, but also we have with us here today a strong partner in education with Volusia County Public Schools, which is the board chair for Wings for Success, and that's Ms. Jessica Lovett. Not only is she the board chair for Wings for Success, but also she's the president/CEO for VMA, a strong partner, again, Volusia County Public Schools, and I would like to welcome both of them with a presentation that they have regarding our Wings for Success program here in Volusia County.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'm welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. We appreciate your time today.
I've never done this. I think so. Okay, so good afternoon, members of the school board and superintendent, Dr. Balgobin. I'm Colleen Carvin, coordinator in Student Services for Volusia County Schools, Alternative Residential Education Program. After 29 years with Volusia County Schools, I can truly say this work is where my heart belongs. Today, I am excited to share how our programs are transforming lives, providing hope, opportunity, and measurable impact for students who need us the most. I'll walk you through our scope, approach, and goals, and highlight outcomes that show we're not just meeting expectations, we're changing future paths for these at-risk youth. Joining me today is Jessica Lovett, board chair for Wings for Success, a nonprofit created to champion AREE and expand opportunities for our students. As we move through this presentation, I do invite you to jot down any questions you might have or ideas, and at the end, we'll be happy to discuss how we can continue building on this momentum together. Thank you for allowing me to share the incredible work we're doing and the bright future we're creating for every student. This presentation reflects our commitment to compliance and best practices. It adheres to the policies that guide our work and ensure consistency across the district. Our strategic plan sets the vision for where we're headed. This presentation aligns with the goals outlined in that plan, goals designed to drive innovation, equity, and excellence for every student. The mission of alternative residential education is to provide a supportive, high-quality education for students in residential placements. We focus on fostering awareness, action, and achievement, helping students navigate challenging circumstances and empowering them to take control of their educational journey. Our vision is to inspire students to recognize their full potential and pursue positive pathways as they transition back into their communities. We aim to prepare students not only academically, but socially and emotionally, so they can reintegrate with confidence and purpose. Our programs operate across four unique sites in partnership with agencies committing to supporting youth. Each site serves a distinct purpose, but together they create a safety net of education, intervention, and hope. The Volusia Regional Juvenile Detention Center is managed by the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice. This facility serves students who are nine to 18 years in age, sometimes up to 20, 22, and they're in grades four through 12, awaiting court or placement. It's located in Circuit 7, so this serves Volusia, Flagler, St. John's, and Putnam County, and we also receive students statewide. It provides year-round education. The students are actually attending school 230 days, and the teachers work 256 days. The average stay is 21 days. Next, we serve SMA healthcare, which also has... Next, we serve SMA healthcare, which also has two programs, RAP and Beach House, and this is a 30-bed facility, and it offers substance abuse treatment through the RAP program for ages 13 through 18, and that stay is about six to nine months. Beach House provides a 21-day respite for students who are usually in age 10 to 18. Sometimes we're getting some younger students now, and that's focusing on behavior and attendance, intruency. Education follows a traditional calendar here as well, and we immediately enroll those students in grades four through 12. We also provide summer credit recovery for the RAP students. The Volusia Family Resource Center is a new center that I've kind of picked up in working with Student Services, and this is a full-scale assessment center focused on diversion and early intervention. Youth arrive through referrals, walk-ins for families in need, and law enforcement to determine those next steps. Is it a detention or release? Operating year-round, the center provides family services and educational support through a dedicated Volusia County Schools teacher on assignment. These sites do represent more than classrooms, their lifelines. Every day, we work to restore hope, provide structure, and open doors to brighter futures for students who need us the most. Our Alternative Residential Education Program ensures educational quality across all multiple sites, with the exception of Family Resource Center. Each year, we serve over 1,100 students, ages nine to 22, in grades three through 12. We provide tailored services with differentiated curriculum, virtual for secondary students, and we use district-aligned curriculum for the elementary students, supported by an academic framework aligned with district goals and ongoing professional development for our educators. Our goals are to reduce truancy, improve attitude, support academic progress, and foster resilience and hope. These efforts are paying off. In 2024, '25, each school year, students did complete over 1,690 courses with us, and over 15 students graduated. I know the numbers don't seem to add to a lot, but that's a lot for these years. Returning students did show improved GPAs, and we also had a lot of successful grade promotions within our programs. But beyond academics, we offer mental health counseling, social-emotional learning, credit recovery, and a nurturing environment that supports emotional and educational well-being. I want to highlight how we manage academics for students in our program. First, students begin earning credit on day one. We don't waste any time. For non-Volusia County students, we request records immediately, and counselors review them to decide if they need original credit, credit recovery, or both. There are challenges. Records often come from multiple schools and can be delayed. Parents do not register these children when they arrive at our Detention Center and Department of Corrections, so we rely on information from, like, Department of Juvenile Justice or a student interview, which isn't always accurate. Sometimes students give incomplete details, so extra research is needed before enrollment is finalized. To keep learning consistent, we use Edgenuity, which is a Volusia County platform, and elementary students are using offline curriculum. Forty percent of our students fall under the ESE umbrella, 504 ELL. And finally, we use Edgenuity Weekly, and we review Edgenuity progress during PLCs, which we have weekly. We also use the Renaissance, which has STAR reading, STAR math for initial reading and math placement, and we also use Zello for career interest inventory. These are our enrollment trends. As you can see, enrollment does continue to grow, and that also is including elementary. Last year, we served approximately 1,200 students. Eighteen of those were in elementary. This year, in just the first quarter, we're at about 375, and 15 elementary students have come in this year between SMA and Detention Center. They show a clear trend, and we need strong community involvement to help support these at-risk youth. This slide represents more than just tasks. It's about transformation. We're trying to take bold steps to support at-risk students with targeted interventions, close those programming gaps, and expand community engagement, so every family knows the opportunity is available. We're elevating recognition programs and incentives to celebrate success, boosting visibility through social media, and ensuring sustainability through careful budgeting and partnerships. Every initiative, from aligning guest speakers to students' needs and to celebrating those achievements with our STAR awards, our graduation ceremonies, and yes, we hold graduation ceremonies virtually in our Department of Corrections and Detention Center, and I invite families in. Build a culture of encouragement and excellence. Our partnerships make this possible. Organizations like One Voice from Volusia, Volusia Recovery Alliance, Daytona State College, Daytona International Speedway, and Military Recruiters, just to name a few. And of course, Wings for Success, led by Jessica Lovett, provides fundraising and educational incentives that empower students and our staff. And through my work on statewide committees, we ensure alignment with broader initiatives, because collaboration is key to lasting impact. Together, we're not just meeting goals, we're creating opportunities that change lives. Before I do turn this over to Jessica, she knows I'm very wordy, I want to share one final thought. These programs have incredible people who work in teaching them with some of the most challenging youth that are at risk. This is going to give you some insight into what we do and why we do it. So beyond academics, we teach life lessons, lessons that remind students that a second chance is possible, that mistakes do not define them, and that hope is real. These lessons are not measured by data, but they can truly change lives. So, I would like to turn this part over to Jessica Lovett, and she's going to speak about the why for Wings for Success. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. So, as you can see, this is not just a one-stop shop. This is not just one area where we can focus our attention. She is running four facilities with some of the most needy human beings in our community. And let me remind you that these kids are in our community. This is not a place that we can send them where they just stop being a problem. This is not a place where they're forgotten. This is a place where we show them what their possibilities and capabilities are. I use the word "we," and I can't use that word "we" because I am not a part of the "we." Colleen and her staff make all of these things possible. I want to come alongside and give her every tool that I can possibly provide to help her be great at her job, because make no mistake, this woman sitting right next to me is the key to success. She is the person that stands up and fights and drives 100% of the success rate that these students are facing. Without her, it would just be like every other jail across the state. There wouldn't be graduations. There wouldn't be course completions. There wouldn't be guidance counselors that are literally mired in, "How are we going to get this information?" and magically coming up with exactly what these kids need so that they are not 19 and in seventh grade because they missed a few tests. Now they can start feeling good about themselves. Here's the best part. Did you know that the military didn't allow someone with a GED to enlist anymore? You have to have a high school diploma. She makes that happen. She makes it possible for them to remove themselves from situations that are going to continually harm them. And when they are re-released into our community, now we have a newly changed person that are coming back. They are not creating the same problems that they were before because they have a new lease on life. They're in a higher grade or graduated. They understand that there are multiple opportunities for them, that they don't have to keep doing the same thing and expect different results, because nobody likes to be insane. And they can grow and grow with us, and that's the whole purpose of Wings for Success, to help her get what she needs so she can figure out how to make them successful. Now, as you can see, Colleen has created this fabulous slide for me where our mission and our vision and what we do and how we do it can get there. This was my slide. A lot less wordy. And so she wants to make sure you have all the information, which is fantastic. So what you just heard were some key statistics, okay? Those are daunting numbers. The fact that we have elementary school students in jail should be wildly concerning to every single person in our community, yet nobody wants to talk about that. Nobody wants to talk about the harsh realities of forgotten children. Nobody wants to realize what a learning disability can do and how frustrating it can get. I personally was recently in an online class. We're two minutes in, I hung up. I was so frustrated that the teacher couldn't answer a simple question because she said something wrong. So we were all on lockdown. We were all not allowed to talk, and I was like, "Okay, well, I have better things to do." Imagine being a student in that classroom that is sitting there face-to-face with a teacher but can't get the barrier broken down of what they need and where their needs are met. So this woman leads a team of unfathomably wonderful human beings that connect with these students and figures out exactly where they are, what they need, and how to get there, and how to get them across that finish line. The staff that you guys have found for her, there's no one better, and they are perfectly in their right place, and they are doing things that give them joy, gives them purpose, makes them so happy to be there. How many days a year do your staff work?
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty?
Some of them.
How many days a year does a traditional teacher work?
One ninety-six.
Okay. A little bit extra.
Sixty days.
Are you sure? I'm wearing my shoes, so I can't count. So, back to why this is important. They live here. They're part of our community. They're part of us. There's no "I" in team, and together, we are the team of Volusia. There is an "I" in Volusia, but no "I" in team. All right, so why are we here? Just go with it. What does this mean for you? What do we need? We need support. We need advocates, and we need you to help lift. Not lift up, lift with us. Lift this mission, lift this drive. Just be there. I'm sure that all of you have a lot of questions, and I would love to answer them for you.
Thank you so much. Any questions, thoughts, feelings, or concerns? Ms. Goodrich?
Well done, ladies. Always enjoyable to hear from you. What can we do? What do you need to see us do to help? What does help look like from the board's perspective? What is it?
So Wings for Success was created as a 501(c)(3) charity to get funding. I really don't understand why they won't let any of these kids go knocking door-to-door and sell chocolate for fundraisers, but you know, something about...
I have no formal mechanism to raise money. I can't sell lockers, parking passes, school yearbooks, pitcher. Like, my kids can't sell candy bars. I don't think they're going to let them out to do that. So there's... To do anything for the children, it comes from us, raising money and trying to go out and solicit money. You know, I'm doing a graduation, and I need a cake, and I need a cap and gown, and I need a pitcher, or tassel, or a cap. You know, I don't really get the funding for any of that kind of stuff.
A lot of those things are provided through parent purchases or fundraisers in a traditional high school.
Right.
Those are things that some students have been putting into their account since they were freshmen. So for four years, they've been adding to get that cost down for seniors. This is where Wings for Success comes alongside. Ms. Brosmer donated last time for some treats for students. Colleen does this really cool thing with a wheel, right? So every time she gets a course completion, there's an opportunity to spin the wheel, and "What are you going to win today?" So when you can take and put a positive spin on things, then people want to go, and they want to have those small wins. This gives them those small wins. So what we're looking for today is awareness. We're looking for personal funding. If you want to sponsor a holiday for these kids, we love to... Last year for Halloween, we went through and did a trick-or-treat. We stood indoors, we dressed up, and did that for them. Last year for Christmas, the Speedway came in and bought a dinner-in-a-box type of thing for students, and we actually got to present to them different opportunities that they have, that they can move forward in their lives with. Am I answering the question to really get to where it needs to be?
I think so. Is there anything specific outside that we're not doing? Or is there anything that we actually have a question for you? If these kids aren't getting traditional resources, are there resources that the kids here aren't getting that kids in standard schools are getting?
They do get all the access to their educational curriculum. It's the above and beyond. It's a PTA. It's a... We do have a SAC committee. She's on it. I don't have that continuous family involvement, because these children are only with us a short period of time. So it's... There is difficulty in raising money. It's more like pounding down doors, you know, hitting the streets, asking for money from businesses and different things like that.
And typically, people don't go to car washes in jail?
Yeah. So the fundraising, but not only that, it's... Am I running... Oh. Not only that, when we look at Teacher Appreciation Week, where am I getting money to do just something for the teachers? And not only that, we're trying to also do stuff for the staff in these facilities as well, because detention center staff, it's not an easy job. So when Ms... Like Frank Kelleher bought us, she just mentioned, you know, International Speedway came out. He bought for all. He bought for the students. He bought for the staff. It was about 200 lunches, let's just say. He came in, he sat with the kids. He talked about the Speedway. We bring in guest speakers from everywhere. If you have a topic that you think kids would appreciate or enjoy. Our children are a captive audience. There's no cell phones. They can't leave the classroom. They can't run off and go to the restaurant. We have a captive... We've had Glenn Ritchie from John Hall Chevrolet come and talk about the car dealership and the job opportunity. He said he'd hire one of them if they came to him later on. We had Frank come out, and he talked about that. We have the military recruiters. We have Daytona State, ATC. Like, while they're there, let's start to expose them to some of these things that they may not be exposed to, because number one, they may not be going to school. Number two, they may be in the dean's office. Number three, we also, like she said, we do course completion. I do an awards thing every two weeks, and if I hear once, I hear twice. "Ms. Carvin, my name's on the wheel. My name's..." I mean, to get their name on a wheel for finishing a course where they've never got recognition in a regular school, we're trying to build them up, I think, and I didn't know the wheel was going to be such a big deal, but it is. And so just...
Deal for success!
Just, but just, we... And sometimes, yeah, and it's the highest STAR reading score, highest STAR math score. I tell them to beat their score, like, you know? So there's a lot of things that we want to do, but, you know, a bag of chips, thank you, Donna, for doing that. You know, it was a bag of chips. That goes a long way for us. So it's not like we need millions of dollars, but just little things that we need throughout the year, and I think that's the reason that Jessica heard me and said that. We do sponsor a holiday, like, and Volusia, or, oh my gosh, One Voice for Volusia, they did, like, candy for the Halloween, and they brought it in. Glenn Ritchie said, "What do you need?" He was at Sam's Club. "What do you need, Ms. Carvin?" You know, buying boxes of candy, so we could do a trick-or-treat thing. Otherwise, it is expensive to serve 50, 60, 70 youth, you know, a couple pieces of candy. So... And the guest speaker thing has been phenomenal, and we want to keep that momentum going, and I can bring in people, and they are totally fine with that, and we're starting to incorporate that also at Stuart Marchman Department of Corrections. It's a little different.
So I have just a few asks for you. If you will email when there's things, because I can tell you, I'm not going to just remember, right? And I'm sure one of you will harass me when I forget. So, in full disclosure and transparency, it's no secret that Jessica and I are very good friends. I am happy to support this, and so I want to make sure that there's no conflict that anyone sees with me being supportive of this, and if I spread it on Facebook, I don't want it to later come back for, you know, anyone to misread this. So I just want to have that conversation in the open so that it's clear about amazing work that you've been doing. I know several of us have been out there and seen what's going on there, so very, very happy to support, but I will need emails to remind me, please.
Wonderful. Dr. Balgobin?
So, going back to Colleen, Colleen Carvin, you've been with us for 29 years. I knew you were with us for many, many years. Not as many as Ms. Haynes, but you're up there. I will share with you that when you find employees where their passion meets purpose, that equals success. And there's a saying that your reputation precedes you, right? So here, when I joined Volusia County Public Schools, I heard about Colleen because of her passion for what she does. And you're absolutely right. She's absolutely phenomenal, and we could not have asked for someone with a bigger heart and passion and purpose where it meets and it collides and comes together. So you are the right leader in that position. Now, going back to needs, I've spoken, because Frank Kelleher is a good partner in ed with us, and I had to actually share with him about that program because I knew he shares that passion as well. But here's what I'm going to ask you to do, and Ms. Goodrich, you can certainly assist also, but it's going to be coordinated, okay? If you can come up with your year, your annual, like, you know, you have those functions that you're going to be...
that you're gonna be first quarter, second, third, fourth, that you know that you're going to repeat year after year. Meet with Denise Ribero, Denise Ribero. And we have twenty-five new partners in education this year. So, if you have your annual plan of what needs coverage and what the coverage is that you need, then we can see which partners, we can connect them with you through Denise. So, Danielle, please make a note of that. And Ms. Goodrich, that doesn't mean that you're off the equation. You can still, there might be things that you would like to, you know, coordinate and sponsor year after year. And that way, you have some set partners for some of these reoccurring activities that you'll be doing, okay?
We have the whole calendar laid out for the different holidays and what people can sponsor. And the whole reason we created the 501(c)(3) is to be able to give community members an opportunity for a tax write-off.
Yeah.
So, and make sure that we have that really pushy person to call and email and make sure things don't fall through the cracks. Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Brosmer? Ms. Brosmer?
Thank you. You both know I love this. And I greatly appreciated the tour that I was able to do. I wanna add a few things to what you've described, based on what I learned when I did the tour. One of the reasons I sent the box of individual-sized snacks was because I was told that, you know, where the... I can call them kids.
Yes.
The kids get meals, but they don't necessarily have something sweet or salty that they can snack on. So, that just seemed like something that was fairly generic. But somebody had also mentioned that they kind of rattled off a list of things that are always needed. These are not event-specific, but because you have turnover, they are things that could be used at any time. And they compared it to an Amazon wishlist.
We have that.
So, I was thinking, as you were presenting, that if we had a page on our website, on our district website, that had that wishlist and how to access it and who to send to, I had to track down what address to send the box to. Because I wasn't sure where it should go. If we make it easier, and then maybe this is something that can show up every once in a while on the VCS Facebook page to remind the public that this is an opportunity for them to help. It's not dollars, per se.
Correct.
But it's stuff that you regularly need that we can send.
So, Colleen put together a Facebook page for us with the Amazon wishlist. And one of my least favorite words in the English language is "should", because whenever I'm talking to my IT guy, that button should be there, but it's not ever there when I need it there. And I'm like, "Yeah, that's why I'm calling you." But anyhow, so it should be very easy on the Amazon wishlist to just click, and it goes exactly to the detention center where it needs to go.
Well, no, not allowed to go. So, we do have our challenges, because we can't just deliver to Department of Corrections and Det...
Correct.
So, it's delivering to our home address. Because I'm...
Was it your house I sent it to? I know I sent it to somebody's house.
And I don't know if that looks weird. I mean, I'm not sure. But the problem is, working within these facilities, they're not my school. They're not my property, and detention's not allowed to receive donations. It's against Department of Juvenile Justice rules. So, I have to, like, ship it to my house, if that make... We do have some challenges that we have to work around.
That is correct. I would just, excuse me, like, a link between our website and yours, because they... When I went to Amazon, I couldn't figure out how to access that page. And that's probably me, but I suspect I'm not the only one. So, I just think it might be helpful if we could connect those two. And that might encourage more participation from the public.
Absolutely.
I agree. I want everybody to put it out there.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes?
Thank you. Thank you for coming today and doing this presentation. And on your list, you know, or what you need, I know, though, even with the detention center, there's things that can't... Like, yes, they can't go there, but you can't even purchase them or have people donate them. Because when I was in federal programs and grants, I would come out there, you know, to go over everything. And, you know, when we were even looking at bringing additional books in, you know, for the students, they have to have a glue binding, they can't have staples in them. There's all these rules and regulations. So, what I would say is, I think we need to be very specific, you know, with what we're asking, so that we don't end up with something then that can't be used there, that has to go somewhere else. Because even with, you know, sending snacks, you have to think about how they're packaged, and if...
Completely. You cannot give lollipops.
No lollipops, right. They're not on our wishlist. Anything that's on there is only items we're allowed to bring in.
Very clear, very specific. And the easiest thing to do is if you have twenty dollars that you want to go ahead and throw, we will send you the link of how to get that to us. So, not necessarily instead of stuff. And then that way, the paid professionals can get exactly what's needed.
Right, because you need the things for the students. But there's a lot of restrictions on what you can and cannot do in order to keep everyone safe there. And keep, you know, because there were many times I was out there, you know, spending days, like, just meeting with them and going through what they wanted so that we could purchase it, the academic side and all that. And, you know, all of a sudden, we go into a lockdown even, and, you know, kids lose instruction time during that. And I know you guys work so hard, but you don't have the control over, you know, what happens when they're not with you and everything. But I do appreciate you coming today and sharing this information. I'm glad to hear that you do have an Amazon wishlist, and you have vetted what's on that. I just needed the public... I mean, you have to have a disclaimer, because you don't wanna offend somebody if they then send you something and you can't use it, because it's against the state regulations.
Regulations, yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to attention.
Thank you, and thank you, you guys, for having a huge heart and for doing what you do. I really appreciate it. I had a couple questions. I'm pretty sure they've gotten answered, but I just... Give me a yes or no. All right.
You got a lot of slides. You're good.
Okay. You can donate online, yes?
Yes.
Perfect. Is there any sort of, like, student sponsor, like, sponsor graduate programs or anything like that? Or is it strictly the...
We will make one up.
I love that.
Well, like, that's part of my list.
She has that.
So, yeah, and like, I would love to be on whatever email list that Krista's on. You can just, like, put me on there, too. How do guest speakers sign up?
Sign up with me.
Okay. Perfect.
You wanna come, doors open. And they're there twenty-four seven. So, even if I'm not there, you could probably come in.
Love that.
Probably not letting you in at three AM.
They're in my classrooms. We bring them through the classrooms.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Well, thank you so much. You guys answered all my questions. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Question. So, when the students come through... So, you said you serve four counties. When the students graduate, or they come to us from these other counties, does that affect our grad... Are they included in our graduation rates?
Working on that right this second. So, if they're Volusia County students, there's a transition. Automatically, they transition back to their zone school. When I look at our population, and I'm trying to keep even more accurate, because we have some... I mean, I don't wanna go into too many dynamics, but sometimes they need an assessment. Or sometimes they've met the credit requirement, but... So, they would have to return to their district. It's under the special education umbrella. We can look at those students and see if they get waivers. And we can complete... We do every service that any other school would do, with the exception of graduation. If they're a DJJ student, Department of Juvenile Justice, because I have two different... I have three different... I have a lot of scenarios. But, and they're coming to us from another county, technically... I've been actually seeking guidance from the state on this, because we have transitioned them back to their counties. And sometimes the counties will pick them up and graduate them. Other times, we're getting some resistance. So, I'm kind of... Actually, it's just funny you're saying this. I'm trying to work with the state on that, and Mike McAliff and I have had some conversations about that. So, to answer your question right now, I actually am in a little bit of a gray area, but they are getting a diploma one way or another. The DJJ kids should be... Their data should be tracking back to their district, that they were last in a regular, traditional public school. Department of Corrections is a little different.
And I remember, so you mentioned the number of completions. And I remember at one of the SAC meetings, it was mentioned something about Orange County. How many completions if you... There was a number that was said.
Oh, we were the highest in the state last year for course completions.
Say that one more time.
They collect that data. We have to do a survey, year-end survey, every year in June. And then we have to submit the data. And yes, we were the highest in the state. And they asked us how we did it. And I said, "A lot of community support, and a lot of spinning the wheel, and a lot of teachers that are very dedicated to these kids." So, yes.
And so, when Jessica said they're not just in jail, that is a fact, because you're getting up and you're going to school. And what I witnessed when I went there was the staff loved on these kids. I don't know how to put it any other way. They just loved on these kids. And I think also to be admired, and you said this, is grade three to twelve. Think about that spectrum of serving. That's huge. That's wow. That is... I mean, that's unlike any other school. And so, thank you for that. You said no PTA. And so, I wonder, Dr. B, as a board, when we look at our funding, you know, does... And this is a question that we can take offline. I know Todd's back there hiding. But these students traditionally would acquire a certain level of funding in the school in which they're at. And so, when they go to DJJ, when they go to Riverview, when they go to any of these alternative centers, which face the same challenges. They don't have a PTA, they're not selling chocolate, the students are transitional, et cetera.
And a lot of them are orphans. Foster care.
Yeah. And so, you know, do we look at a funding formula that will allow to... Again, we have a gracious community, but I think that the model's a little bit different than a traditional school. In real... You know, starting with the fact that they work year-round, which, again, that's not... Everybody wants to do that. And so, the folks who are doing it, it's because they want to do it. So, just a thought. And then, last but not least, calendar graduation. Can you get that on our calendars? I would be so...
Don't I do them? Okay. Another fact... There's a lot of weird factors with our world, but I love my weird world. But I'm just saying, when you graduate, you could be leaving in five or ten days. So, I'm literally throwing this graduation together.
Let us know.
Boom. But I will put you guys, because I do them virtually, and I invite people in, and I set up my computer. Maybe I need a podium. Anybody got a podium they can throw my way? No, but, um, you know...
Yes, anybody out there with a podium, you need a podium.
And I set them up, and then I invite the parents, because the parents can't come into the detention center. But I will tell you this, at Department of Corrections, parents can come in at the county jail, which is amazing, because they set us up in a big room and they let us... We have to run those graduations as they happen, like...
So, at the county jail, we can do it, but at the...
Detention center, I bring in the students. I think it's more impactful, because the kids are all in that room, seeing that kid walk down with a cap and gown, and they're cheering him on. And I open it up. It's... I've done big graduations. I've been on the Jumbotron at the Ocean Center. I've done mainland high school. These, to me, and not that those aren't anything, because they are, but these, to me, are just... It's like nothing else. So, because these are kids that, probably against all odds, may not have graduated. You know, most, a lot of them, so... But I will invite you.
Yes, please.
I will...
Invite us all. Absolutely.
You guys join me, and you can say a few words, and they love it.
It would be an honor.
Might not be the perfect, you know, Jumbotron and flowers and all that stuff, but it's a graduation.
It will be perfect.
It'll be perfect, yes.
And last but not least, I wonder, Dr. B, if there's an opportunity... I know, and I actually wrote this down before you said it. When it comes to getting the paperwork from other school districts, I'm sure you pull your hair. And the reality is that we are in a... I don't know if you all have a regional Circuit Seven consortium of school districts, because honestly, that should be stop what you're doing and do it right now and get that paperwork to our team, like, now. And so, I think from ESE standpoint, from... I think that maybe working with the superintendents. Again, if we can make that a priority, in the same fashion, we'll do the same. When the student leaves us, you know, maybe there's twenty, forty-eight hours to get that paperwork to that school district, so that they don't confront the same thing. I'm sure it's reciprocal. I'm sure we're both probably complaining about the same thing. And so, just a thought.
So, if, again, going back, if that's a reoccurring theme, then it has to be discussed with Mike McAliff, right? Because then Mike will...
It's more because these children jump around. And Jessica's been to ten schools. And Jessica is now homeschooled. And Jessica's now, like, and nobody knows where Jessica went. And there's disappearing acts. And these are a challenging group of youth, you know? And so, sometimes...
And they went to seventy-five percent of this class and sixty percent of that class.
And then they were kicked out of school. Or there was... So, it's more just the dynamics, I would say. But we want to do the best job we can to get all the records that we can possibly get for a kid and try to clean that transcript up. So, when they do leave us, they'll be in better shape. I mean, that's the goal and the hope. District to district, not a real... My people have their contacts. They know who to call. But it's the real, unique kids that... Or the foster kids that are in a group home here, and now a group home here, and a group home. And I will make... I will make a lot of calls and try to hunt down what I need when my people get to that point where they're like, "We can't get anything else." And I do have contacts, so...
So, let's go back. What I'm hearing, it's surveys match, trying to do that survey match, which we know it's a whirlwind, but especially for these students. But going back to what Mr. Cologne was saying, the part here that we have to process, Colleen, you house the students from three other counties plus ours, right?
And others.
And we've been in education for a long time to know that removal, sometimes, not removal, but temporary removal from your home setting to another setting, sometimes people tend to think that responsibilities are gone.
Right, right.
If we're seeing that trend with the other three counties, then we need to have a meeting and let us know, so that we can have the appropriate cabinet member there. Because it's their students. We're providing the services. And everything and anything that they need to do from their end, we have to follow through with that. Because if the survey match is not there, the probability of these students graduating is almost nonexistent. We have to be able to do that survey match. So, we will help emphasize that with you.
Like I said, it's not necessarily the counties. It's just that the transient... These children are so transient, and they've jumped from place to place to place. So, it's more like a research project.
And I think that the key to all of this is just making sure that we're all talking.
Yeah.
Because when we sit silent, nothing can move. But when we start talking to each other, and we start talking about this, and we start shedding light to this, then nobody's left in the dark.
And that's why you're here today, and we are grateful for that.
And I am very grateful for Jessica, my former cheerleader, Atlantic High School.
That's how I got roped into this. I went for a tour to try and get more employees for our manufacturers, and I'm sitting in the front row, and I hadn't seen Colleen in over twenty years. And she goes, "Okay, Jessica Perry, so how are you gonna help?" And I was like, "Oh, Lord." How to ask. "Okay, here I am. Let's go."
That's awesome. Well, thank you. Any other thoughts, feelings, or concerns? That's awesome. Well, thank you. Any other thoughts, feelings, or concerns? Well, again, thank you for coming, and...
Thank you for having us.
Please don't hesitate to ask, ask, ask.
And please feel free to email me if you have suggestions, or you know somebody in the community that you think would be a great guest speaker. Oh, that was the last slide. And, you know, or that just wants to support us, because I'm starting to have people come out. I am, the momentum's going now.
Awesome.
And I'm getting phone calls, and I'm gonna be going to a jail, at the Tamoca Prison. And I'm just, I'm just, I don't know what the answer is, but I know these youth are, they need all the support that they can get. And I don't know if this is the right thing to do, but I'm just trying to build that community partnership, momentum, academic success. But please, you can email me, too. Whoops.
That was our cell phone number that was on there, my cell phone number, so if you have any questions, my email address. Don't hesitate to reach out. Pretty sure, literally, all of you have my cell phone number, except that guy. Not sure who that guy is, but Dr. Evans don't have your phone number. But I will know you.
Very good.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. It is 1:49. We'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back at 2 o'clock.
Ms. Haynes.
All right. Thank you so much. Next time around the agenda is item 3.01, House Bill 1473 Quarterly Report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to ask Captain Todd Smith, our Director for Safety and Security. He will probably provide you with one of the shortest presentations of this evening regarding House Bill 1473. But also, we have some good news, and I would like for you to share some of that good news here at the workshop that we received yesterday.
Good afternoon, Superintendent, Chair, Board members. I'm Captain Todd Smith, the Director of Safety and Security for Volusia County Schools. Today, we will be discussing the quarterly safety report in accordance with Florida State statutes. This presentation aligns with Policy 511, Safety of Facilities. This presentation also aligns with Guard Rail 2, Provide Conditions That Enhance Student Learning. In accordance with House Bill 1473, school districts are required to report four things each quarter: the number and percentage of schools, including charter schools, inspected or re-inspected during the quarter; the number and percentage of schools with no school safety requirement deficiencies. In the first quarter, zero schools were inspected or re-inspected by the Office of Safe Schools. This represents 0% of the schools inspected or re-inspected. No schools had school safety requirement deficiencies. Therefore, 0% of schools had no school safety requirement deficiencies. We didn't get audited, so, in the first quarter. With the quarterly report concluding, I wanted to provide an update on safety and security in the district. Currently, we have six high schools where metal detectors are fully implemented: Pine Ridge, Atlantic, New Smyrna Beach, Seabreeze, Pearson, and Mainland. We should have the remainder of the schools implemented within the next few months. We are currently behind our expected full implementation schedule due to vendor production issues. We've been working closely with Student Services, doing culture walks and identifying the schools with the highest SESSOR incidents. Looking at the data, we've been working with our top-tier schools to help them improve processes and reduce incidents. Additionally, we've been putting out clear communications and expectations to our students on behavior. Our reunification team has been meeting monthly, training on expectations, processes, and equipment usage. Our goal has been to take a group of trained employees and develop a higher-performance team. The team has worked through the processes, evaluated the equipment available, practiced reunifications, and identified strengths and weaknesses and areas for improvement. In January and April, we have small-scale reunifications planned to pressure test our training and processes. We've also been training all principals, assistant principals, and deans each month. We've done extensive training on threat management, Office of Safe School audits, metal detector implementation, and managing truancy. Over the last two weeks, our team, in conjunction with the Sheriff's Office Training Department and SWAT team, have been evaluating cutting-edge technology related to bulletproof glass for school hardening. We've joined the state's Work Group on Threat Management and continue our role as members in FS3's Compliance Committee. So far this school year, we've done a See Something, Say Something campaign, and a Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety campaign. Later in the year, we will be doing safe driving, internet safety, and the dangers of vaping and drugs. In relation to threats on our campuses, after seeing a massive spike in threats last year, we began reviewing options to address the concerns. Following guidance from the Police Executive Research Forum, we reviewed the U.S. Secret Service's Behavioral Threat Assessment Unit, a guide for state and local law enforcement to prevent targeted violence. The Secret Service did an analysis of 37 school attacks from 1974 to 2000. From that, it was learned that 81% of attackers told someone about their plans. 93% showed concerning behaviors before the attacks. 93% showed concerning behaviors before the attacks, and 34% had discipline for concerning behaviors. This led to additional research from 2006 to 2018. They analyzed 67 incidents where they prevented a school shooting. 94% of the plotters exhibited concerning behaviors. 75% communicated their intent to cause harm. 87% experienced stressors like bullying and family conflict. 50% had access to firearms. They also reviewed 173 public space attacks from 2016 to 2020. 73% made threats or communicated their intent of violence. Again, similar to school attacks, 94% displayed concerning behavior. Virginia implemented a threat assessment model statewide that resulted in a 99.8% reduction of threats becoming acts of violence. This research and the research on best practices led to the publication of that document and the recommendation that agencies create a behavioral threat unit. By adopting these best practices, the program ensures a modern and effective approach to protecting schools while staying in line with proven methods used across the country. After reviewing the program, we traveled to Pinellas County and learned how they manage their behavioral threat unit and observed it in action. From there, we developed a similar program based on the Secret Service's framework and recommendations, mixed with the lessons learned from Pinellas and Palm Beach Counties, and research conducted on local needs such as investigating 4 to 5 Florida tips and written threats to kill. Threats of violence to our schools are often complex. They generally require subpoenas, search warrants, have complex case law associated with the investigations, and require a specific skill set. With all this in mind, the sheriff wanted to ensure that we are at the forefront of advances in policing and created our behavioral threat unit which is now fully functional. On stats, we compared our first quarter of 2024-2025 school year versus the first quarter of this school year in some of our major metrics. In Week 9 of last year, we were at 20 arrests for written threats to kill. This year, we're at 10, a 50% reduction. Last year, we were at 494 to 5 Florida tips. This year, we're at 136, down 72%. K-9 Maverick has checked 94 classrooms for firearms in addition to the parking lots and cars that he's checked. That's just in the first nine weeks. Last year, at the end of the nine weeks, we recovered 13 weapons. This year, we're at 4, a 69% reduction. No firearms were discovered on our campuses last school year or so far this school year. We have historically averaged two firearms discovered on our campuses per year. Recently, Gaggle released its 2025 Student Safety Report, and we compared the national trends to our district. Nationwide, there was a 142% surge in gun-related images being detected. In Volusia County, there was a 23% decrease. Nationally, there was a 51% increase in elementary suicide and self-harm. In Volusia, we saw a 51% decrease. Nationally, there was a 24% increase in drug and alcohol-related incidents. In Volusia, there was an 85% reduction. Just yesterday, we were notified that we were awarded the Campus Guardian-Angel Pilot Program through the state of Florida, one of only three counties. We're super excited about that. We're very grateful to the state for giving us that opportunity, and we look forward to seeing how it integrates with our layers of protection. There's not one thing that keeps kids safe. There's not a magical bean that you can plant and it just keeps kids safe. It's all of the different layers of protection and all of the different strategies that we're putting together and looking at the data and analyzing how to use that data best to reduce incidents on our campuses. And this is just another layer of safety that's going to be added into our safety plan. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Brosmer?
Would you elaborate for everybody in case they haven't read about the drones? Would you elaborate on the specifics and how that will work and all of the details that we know so far?
I can elaborate on the details we know so far. So, basically, the drones are stored on the campus in different locations. There's multiple drones, and then they can, their goal is to launch within five seconds. They can get across the campus in eight seconds. Indoors, they can fly 30 to 50 miles per hour. Outside, they can fly up to 100 miles per hour. The goal is to make contact with a threat within 15 seconds. So obviously, these situations, any kind of a threat like that, is a high-stress situation, and on the drones, they have flashing lights and sirens and then a microphone, as well as a pepper gun. So it can, you can distract and disorient them with the lights, with the sirens. If they're refusing to put down the gun or they're a threat to human, they can shoot them with the pepper gun. And then if that doesn't work, then they can just hit the person with the drone. Obviously, we have to work out all the logistics on how all this stuff works, procedures, things like that. We've been given the green light to start the pilot. From there is when we implement the program and how everything works and do all the research on implementing and, you know, things like that. But that is the gist of how it works. One of the questions that we got a lot was, what if they're in a room? You know, then they would fly the drone into a window and try to create a hole so that another drone could get through, so.
And what activates the drone?
So it would be integrated with our panic alert system, the Synthetics Alert, so that when the teacher does a lockdown, then the drone would, they would deploy and start looking for the threat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodrich.
Just congratulations. Great job by your team. Awesome report. Thank you.
Ms. Haynes?
Thank you. I also want to say an awesome job, and I don't know how we got selected as one of the three counties or districts in Florida, but I would say it probably has to do with the job that you've been doing in keeping our students safe. And I had read that piece because my thought too was how does it get inside of the room? And I read that piece that it can break through a window, basically, in order to have an opening to get into that classroom, if that's where it is. You know, we have, and there is no one thing that keeps our children safe. You know, I'm, I still do have the two largest high schools waiting for the metal detectors. And I understand you're doing them by size and...
Well, they stopped making them. We're waiting on them to be delivered once we get them.
I know, but we, I am looking forward to when we get them onto all high school campuses. And it seems to be going well, you know, where we do have them and all that. But this, this brings another layer. I mean, the whole thing is we just need everyone to feel safe when they walk on a campus so that they can focus on learning, so thank you.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, and I just want to say thank you for everything and for always exploring all the different options for safety because you're right, it's not just, you know, one-stop shop. Is there any way you could email, I mean, I know I want, you all might, to the stats that was the national versus Volusia County, just so I could have that because it's extremely impressive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate you all with your rollout. You know, if you think about it, you're up to six schools, and how many emails have we gotten regarding the detectors?
Knock on wood here.
I mean, we go to the airport and complain, okay? I mean, just, just the, so, that didn't happen because of the machines. That happened because of our staff. That happens because of your staff. That happens because of everyone that's dedicated to the same mission of safety and security for our students. I personally witnessed it and put it to the test. And, you know, I think it's a great, it's a great layer. We'll use that term "layer." We're adding layers to school safety. I know there's a lot of questions, and I asked you some questions, and there's still a lot to learn about this. Just like everybody else, we were all pretty much surprised that we were chosen, and it's not something, I'm sure there'll be policies that'll have to come before us to consider in due time. But, you know, again, there's still not a whole lot of detail. As he said, it's just that initial, hey, tag your it. We don't know where we're going yet, but tag your it and you're, you need to go find somewhere to, so. Thank you for that, and I look forward to learning more about how that all will work. And again, I know there's still more questions than there are answers. And so, thank you for making that available as soon as it is. So, any other thoughts, feelings, or concerns? Very good. Thank you so much, Captain.
All right, next up, Item 3.02, White Fleet Update.
At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Patty Core. Ms. Patty Core is our Chief Operating Officer, along with Mattson Kanji, our Director for Student Transportation Services. We also have Mr. Chris Boyer, Assistant Director for Fleet and Finance for Student Transportation Services. And they will be sharing with you a little bit about our white fleet. I have to share also, please take a seat, my two gentlemen and lady. I have to do a shout-out, since this gentleman is here today and we don't see him that much, you know, on stage. But Chris Boyer, as you know, he does our routes for transportation. And Florida DOE, they always release a report that shows pretty much what transportation, the cost, how districts are doing, because we know it's, on an average, is about 50%. That's covered on an average. But Volusia County is one of the counties that really stands out in that report. And it's through the effective scheduling that Chris does so beautifully each and every year that when it comes to the return or investment, we're looking at a 68%, 68%, right, Chris, or 69? 68, close to 69%, the one county that stands out from an efficiency standpoint. And that's due to Chris and his meticulous work with scheduling. So Chris, I know we're going to be surprised, we were going to surprise you, but why not surprise you here? And then we will do a delivery at some other point.
Thank you. And I can't take all the, any of the credit for that. That really has to do with our routing and our operations divisions, Ms. Betsy Burris, Mr. Craig Pender, and then also our Director, Mr. Mattson Kanji. Ms. Beatrice Avram in our routing department, the routing team, they just do a phenomenal job with regards to making sure that we're as efficient as possible.
Well, thank you. It's Team Volusia, right? Under your leadership, under your leadership.
Thank you so much Superintendent Balgobin, and good afternoon Chair Cologne, School Board Members. We are pleased to be here today. Again, I'm Patty Core, your Chief Operating Officer, joined by Mattson Kanji and Chris Boyer from our Transportation Department. And at risk of violating, I guess, a copyright, Chris is our Rain Man. I call him Rain Man. I know that was a movie back in the day, and I don't know that it's copyrighted. But the value of his knowledge cannot be measured. If you've known Chris any amount of time, he is a product of Volusia County Schools. He has grown up around transportation and buses since, what, eight, you were eight years old? Or very young, and, and, and he just very much has a passion. When you talk about, and this is no pun intended, putting the right person in the right seat on the bus when you have someone doing a job, this is the epitome of that right here. He knows his numbers, his data, and that's the part he plays in helping our efficiency. And I have to give a shout-out, he can't be here right now, but Todd Cease also compliments you. He says, whenever I need anything from the financial side, because Chris's actual title in transportation is Assistant Director of Fleet and Finance. And he absolutely talks Todd Cease's language, so Todd appreciates that because very few of us do. And so anytime he asks Chris for anything, his reports are impeccable, and he never has to worry or question. So, once again, we were asked to come and give an update. The white fleet plays an important part. And we know how important safety is and from Captain's side. So what Chris and his team do is they make sure all of our vehicles that are on the road are also safe. As you know, in the Operations Department, we have people who travel every single day around all of our facilities, maintaining and fixing things, and, and he keeps up with, with all of that. He's going to go through some important information for you guys today. There's also a document in your executive content. If you haven't seen it, we encourage you to take a look at that. So I know by the next board meeting, this will be updated, Mr. Cologne with the new org. And this falls in line with our District Policy 523 and also our White Fleet Guidelines. This falls under our Guard Rail for our strategic plan of Guard Rail 3 to improve our operational efficiency and maximize our resources to support student learning. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Chris to begin our presentation about the white fleet.
Thank you very much. As Ms. Core stated, I've been with Volusia County Schools Transportation. Now, this is my 27th year. And it seems like just yesterday, but the years do seem to go by fast, which now I think it officially makes me old. But I love what I do. I have a passion for safety. I have a passion for the school transportation business. And I just want to thank everyone for their support over the years. So let's talk about white fleet. What is white fleet? Basically, these are vehicles that support the district's operation, stakeholders throughout the district. It's also called the support fleet. This could be anything from a warehouse vehicle to a transportation support vehicle, schooly cafe, technology services. And they basically, you know, help out everyone in the district wherever they can. This can involve facilities maintenance vehicles, the tradesmen that go out to the schools and fix the HVAC or the plumbing or the electrical, and they're on the road every day. And we have well over 300 of these units that are on the road. And it's not the buses. So the buses are a completely separate aspect. That's yellow fleet. And, you know, we, we do meticulously maintain those as well. And just to give you a little bit of history, Student Transportation Services maintained about a third of the white fleet up until about 2021, and there was an audit conducted by RSM that evaluated the entire white fleet operation. And at that point, there were about 200 vehicles that were under the Facilities Maintenance Division, and they were serviced separately. So what they suggested was that we consolidate and put everything under one umbrella, which, which has worked out pretty well. So what we did is we conducted a thorough inspection of all these vehicles as they came through the doors, and we've been constantly maintaining them since 2021. So the Safety and Maintenance Program at Student Transportation, basically, we acquire, we maintain, and then we remove some from service if deemed necessary. We do have the four shop locations. I'm not sure if all of you have been out to our facilities, but we have a Daytona location, Deltona, we have New Smyrna, and then we have the Deland location. So the vehicles are serviced at various intervals. When they are brought in, it's usually every 5,000 miles or annually, whichever occurs first. Sometimes we have more vehicles coming in sooner than others just based on what the usage is. And the determining factors can be mileage, days, or engine hours, just contingent upon whichever comes first. Notifications are sent out to the various departments when vehicles are due for service to keep that good communication going. And this is more than just a quickie oil change when a vehicle comes in for service. This is something that goes through a very comprehensive safety inspection. We have a standardized form that is utilized for all District White Fleet and that is maintained in our files. We feel that every vehicle is equally as important, and the Student Transportation Team works to ensure minimal downtime is to not interrupt the overall mission of this district. The great thing is, you know, we have a centralized process now where all vehicle acquisitions go through Student Transportation. So we facilitate all of those purchases, and things have been actually going very well with regards to turnaround on acquiring new vehicles. We also have local vendors that are close proximity to our various terminals, which allow us a quicker turnaround on repairs. So we're able to turn, turn those vehicles around quickly to minimize any downtime. We also came up with a vehicle justification form. So let's say we have a school. Let's say we have a department that needs a vehicle. So what they do is they would fill out this justification form, and there's criteria on there that they, they would fill out to justify their need. That is then signed off by a requester. It then goes to the Director of the appropriate department. And then it is sent to Transportation where Mr. Kanji signs off on it, and then Ms. Core would then sign off on it to allow for that transparency. So, this allows for us to determine what the replacement priority really needs to be. And any assignments, just to, just to clarify, any assignments to vehicles are typically the responsibility of the department that is utilizing the vehicles. That's typically not something Transportation gets involved in. So anything that is requested, you have to put a story behind why, why you need it. We also implemented a vehicle deletion form for even more transparency. So when we remove a vehicle from service, we go ahead and put some information on there that's, that's relevant to why we are deleting the specific vehicle. That is reviewed then by my Director, Mr. Kanji, and then also Ms. Core. And then you would then see it on the Asset Retirement Report that you typically receive, I think, once a month, you know, here. Safety is always the number-one priority in transportation. We don't skimp on safety. We, we make sure everything is safe going out the door, and I just have to thank my fleet team. They have done just a phenomenal job with regards to keeping a lot of these vehicles going. We've had to keep them a little, a little bit longer than, than we'd like, but they do a great job. A great leadership in the shops. And then also, thanks to my finance team for doing all the behind-the-scenes aspects with regards to processing invoices and things of that nature. So, right sizing a vehicle for the right application. Okay, so what we do is we evaluate the needs of the departments through collaborative meetings. We review what's needed for that particular department. We review what's needed for that particular department. What are we? What are we buying? What are we looking at replacing? And if you need a van, do we, you know, do we need ladder racks? What do we need for shelving? What type of tow package do we need? What's the payload? So we we ask a lot of these questions and we don't necessarily meet just one time. We may meet several times just to make sure that we're all on the same page and that priorities haven't shifted. We may have a situation where we have every intention of replacing one vehicle, but then another vehicle goes down. So we might have to shift some things around. And that collaboration helps making sure we get it right the first time because we are stuck with this as a long term asset. So we want to make sure that we're making the right decision the first time because we're not replacing it in two years or three years. Right vehicle for the right application. I never want to see, you know, Ms. Core in an F-350 dually where she needs a ladder to get into the vehicle. And I don't want anything too overly stylish from Mr. Kenji like a BMW because that just really wouldn't sit too well with a lot of people. So we do purchase vehicles off the State of Florida contract, and we usually get a good bang for our buck on there. The turnaround has been phenomenal, but, you know, pricing has gone up quite a bit. I can tell you that vehicles that were about 25 to 28,000 a few years, maybe about five years ago, are over 50,000 now. Just an example of like a cargo van. So we do have a five year plan. When it comes to the five year plan, that's reviewed and evaluated every year with the Budget Office, with projected needs and any estimated costs that we're able to come up with. Fortunately, the State of Florida, they do a great job with regards to keeping that contract up to date. So we're able to get the latest and greatest as far as pricing. One of the goals that we have is 10 years, 100,000 for our unleaded fleet and 12 years, 150 for diesel. I think that's a pretty reasonable replacement cycle. I can use the County of Volusia as an example. They do have a about a six year, 100,000 mile replacement cycle for a lot of their frontline vehicles. And this would be a very advantageous cycle to adopt. I do network with a lot of other districts, and it is quite interesting to see what other districts are are doing. I think we're extremely proactive and treating every vehicle equally and with equal importance. I think that's that's definitely the the way to go. Newer vehicles allow for high levels of service and efficiency versus being in the shop for repairs more frequently as the vehicle ages. We're seeing that a lot now with a lot of the vehicles that we inherited because there were a lot of years where we were not purchasing vehicles. We do evaluate the fleet annually and we do note priorities that are needed. We always want to be, you know, proactive versus reactive. But I think we're still at the point where we're still in reactive and we're getting to where we're going to be proactive once we get everything balanced out and phase a lot of these older vehicles out. We also have annual an annual usage analysis, a review, a reallocation and consolidation if necessary. We do decommission the vehicles and we sell them at auction and we do our best to recoup as much as possible when it comes to those auction proceeds. Now, we did have a lot of dry years and everything was going pretty well as far as our trend for replacement up until about 2008. And then when there was the economic downturn and budget constraints, vehicles weren't replaced as consistently as as they were before. So this did require vehicles in service for a longer period of time. We're still feeling that pain, but we're getting there. We're getting through that. And as I stated, the new vehicles have a much higher cost plus adjustments for recent tariffs. So not only were they high before, they're higher now because of the tariffs. Okay, so this is basically an overview of what we have in the fleet. We have the pickup trucks and the service trucks that totals 94 units. You know, these are the cargo vans. Those are the ones that the facilities maintenance folks use. Plumbing, HVAC, electrical. Then we have cars and SUVs for administrative staff. We also have passenger vans that are typically at the the schools and or transportation. We have box trucks. Those are typically the warehouse trucks that you see making deliveries to the schools. We also have, I call them utility box vans. Those are the ones that have the the service service caps on the back that they have the service beds and they also have a storage area that you can kind of walk into and store your supplies. We also have some miscellaneous trucks. Usually those are the tractors that are at the the warehouse pulling the trailers. And then we also have a few vintage step vans, too, which are left, which will hopefully be phased out on this next cycle of vehicles that we have coming. Okay, just to show you a little bit of the upgrade progress, from January of 24 to October of 25, we may we have made significant progress. Now, I know that number seems pretty high for the the new vehicles through the five years. But that's because we are in catch up mode. I anticipate that this is all going to balance out over time. But the goal is to phase out a lot of those other ones that are especially over 20, 16 to 20, and then the 11 to 15. So like I said, we're making good progress. We're trying to discover new efficiencies where we can and consolidate where we can to minimize. Basically, you know, a consistent replacement cycle for the School District White Fleet can be beneficial in many ways. You get improved safety features and technology. We do have warranty incentives and we're able to do some of this warranty work in house. Improved fuel efficiency. Some of the vehicles we're getting now, especially some of these hybrids, it's amazing what we get for some of the fuel, the fuel, the miles per gallon. Longer service intervals due to extended life products and manufacturers' recommendations. Less chances of lost productivity and disruption of service due to major repairs and or service calls. Minimization of costly mechanical issues as the vehicle ages. We have some vehicles now that we have to repair because we don't have a replacement at this point. So we are having to to invest some dollars in that typically we would not be investing dollars in. We also have the opportunity for better parts availability, sometimes trying to find parts for even a 15, a 12 to 15 year old vehicle are even getting more and more difficult. Improved reliability, reduced vehicle downtime, and then better residual at the time of disposal. So those are just some of the some of the benefits of having our replacement cycle. And again, I'm very passionate about making this happen. Like I said, we've made some really, really good progress to make sure that we have a very safe and reliable and feasible fleet to run.
Want to add anything?
I just want to make sure that you you guys all understand, Board members, the work that Chris does put in. And I wanted to allow him to showcase this for you. This is this is his passion. And if there's anyone in the world that's going to be able to to follow through with with your plan, it's going to be Chris. It's definitely going to be Chris. This is his wheelhouse and we really appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Any questions?
Thank you, Board members. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Haynes?
Thank you for the presentation and the update. So I I like the fact now that you're having them complete a justification form because that is something new. And you're also, when you're looking, you're using a form now for the vehicle deletion piece. The last time we heard about this was right around COVID time or coming out of COVID. And at that time, we you had a formula that you also used to determine who should or should not have it, like they had to drive over a certain amount of miles for the year. Are you still using that formula as part of the justification piece?
That and that formula, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, that formula we actually have in our White Fleet Procedures Manual and it's 6,000 is what we determined at that time. And I think that was actually back when when Mr. Aiken was here is when we determined that.
Well, actually, unless I'm incorrect, I thought it had to be like over 8,500 before we assigned a vehicle.
There was some varying information that we were receiving and and I guess it was determined at that point we were just going to stick with the six. I mean, we can always reevaluate it and see what the current trends are. Absolutely. If if we need to extend that out, absolutely.
Okay, and I heard you say we have over 300 vehicle, White Fleet vehicles now that are in use?
Correct, 323.
And so all of the people that have those assigned to them then are meeting the criteria of driving over what you expect for the mileage in order for them to be assigned a vehicle?
There is information. Now, this is something that I've put together in a spreadsheet for Ms. Core and I to review. But I have put together the usage for last fiscal year. So there is some data that we're going to be reviewing to identify anything that we can shift around. Because in all honesty, the goal is to, and my my goal is to actually reduce White Fleet. Because I think we can we can realize more, you know, more pool vehicles based on those that may state, okay, I I need to have a vehicle. But if you're only going, you know, 1,500 or 2,000 miles, you don't you don't need a vehicle. Either you can use a pool vehicle, you get reimbursed for mileage. So.
And and at the time, individuals, you know, over the years, it's been interesting because some people will park very close to their home, which I don't have a problem with necessarily, to then get into a vehicle and then to drive to the work location. And so that was one of the ones I was always concerned about because everybody would qualify for that if you think about it, okay, if we're using it that way. So I'm glad to hear that you are tracking it and you are putting together something to look at. Because my goal is to also reduce that piece. And also, and I'm I'm sure you're following up on this, at one point, we had people leaving the county, you know, with some of the vehicles and parking them at their homes outside of the county. And that, you know, and that came to our attention because people in other counties said, you know, you've got Volusia County vehicles parked in Flagler and Palm Coast and places like that. And so I'm hoping that, you know, we've been able to clear all that up. Because it's, to me, it's not an entitlement piece. It's a piece of, these are the individuals that drive a lot of miles every day, either going in to repair things, you know, visiting the schools, whatever they're doing. And that, we need to be fiscally responsible and because it's taxpayer dollars that are paying for this. And most of the time, unless they're driving over a certain amount of mileage, the reimbursement piece that we give them following those state guidelines is the cheaper way to go than handing them a vehicle with all of the maintenance and everything. Because when we're handing the vehicle, we're handling we're handling all the maintenance, the gas, everything for it, the insurance and all of that. But thank you for giving us an update on this.
You're welcome. But I really think that Policy 523 being revised helped clarify a lot of things with regards to the the out of county aspect.
Yeah, the changes we made to it. But we can we can write a policy and publish it. But if it's not monitored, then we don't necessarily correct the action.
Thank you, Chair, for that question. There are two things that we're working on. So we will get together to review. We do that annually. And so for those that we know, I kind of have the luxury of knowing which side of the county people live and work on. So in a case like that, if somebody lives on the east side and they park near their home, but they work, say, at DAC, but sometimes they have to drive around, we take the total mileage and then subtract out the mileage from there to here. So if it's 25 miles to get here from where they park their work car, times however many days, we'll subtract that out and see what that net mileage is and see if it meets the threshold. And if not, and we have someone else who needs the vehicle, we may move vehicles around that way. And the other thing we're looking at doing is putting together, Chris and I talked about a spreadsheet, where anyone who's assigned a white vehicle has to update us on where they park it. We haven't updated that in a while. So I know, you know, where I live, I park at Champion. It's the one closest to my house. So we'll we'll get on that and we'll have a list of anyone who has one assigned to them. If it's a pool vehicle, then it gets parked either at Transportation or at Olson. You know, there's places the pool vehicles stay. People drive there and then, like my environmental team, there's a there's a pool vehicle. They drive to Olson. And then when they have to go to a to a site, they jump in the pool vehicle and it never goes home.
Well, and and for the situation you mentioned at the beginning of that, you know, say they're driving here to DAC, but they're picking up a vehicle to drive it and they may only go out in that vehicle one time for the week. It would behoove us to.
Pay mileage.
Pay mileage under the way that the mileage is set up. And and you also mentioned the RSM audit. You know, that was one of the, when they do it, one of the risk factors that came up was taking a look at the White Fleet. And I was in full agreement because I knew that it was split like where they were and it didn't make any sense. It's like, why aren't we putting all of them together to service them? So I was happy that that change was made quickly and that you guys are overseeing that part.
Thank you. I was happy to work with RSM. They were a great group of folks and had some great suggestions. And we implemented everything and we're we're good to go on on all the corrective action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodrich.
Thank you for the presentation, and I would just want to follow up with that. And when you guys do go through and self audit is kind of what it sounds like is going on. I'd love to have you guys come back and share with us what you found and how we were able to reduce costs. Because we talked about on the front end, but I'd like to see the result of that.
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that. And because, as Chris said, our goal is actually to reduce and and find areas where we could use the pool vehicles. Because sometimes if we have pool vehicles and they're not even being utilized enough, we can reassign. That would be our goal. We're not trying to add new vehicles to the White Fleet that don't already exist. It's a replacement cycle for those, especially the workers that need those trucks and vans and and things to do their jobs. So we'll be looking at that. I have denied requests already since we implemented implemented that, or at least since I've been in this position. And and sometimes it's a tough conversation to have, but, you know, we have to make sure that we train them and they know how to do their mileage and then they, you know, put in for reimbursement.
And I, when it comes to the the new vehicles coming in, they have to turn an old one in. If you're getting a new one, you're turning in an old one. You're not going to hold on because we might need it. Now, if if you've put in for it to be replaced, is the reason you put in for it to be replaced, bring in your your old vehicle and turn it in. And I have tracking mechanisms for all of all of that as well.
And Chris really does get our money's worth because we have some beater vehicles come in and we're like, oh, my gosh. And he still gets a couple grand at auction for it. So we still usually get something back out of it.
Yes, we do get some residual dollars. Sometimes very surprising, too. Thousands of dollars for for things that you wouldn't think would bring thousands of dollars.
Or would cost us more than that to keep them in in functioning and on the road, right?
Great, thank you. I I'm a little bit different in my thought process because I think that we may have some folks that are costing us more in mileage reimbursement than the cost to lease the vehicle. And so I know the state often wants us to reuse the route that's leased. And so I would hope that's part of the consideration as well. Because, you know, again, sometimes from a school district standpoint, it behooves us to issue them a vehicle versus paying the mileage, which ends up being the higher option.
All right, any other questions, thoughts, feelings or concerns? All right, hearing none. It is 2:46 and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.